We are long, correct? Right now.
Sound of Music Gallery.
I don't know. Live. Um, to this. We got about five minutes.
Okay, I should know the answer to this, but members of the laws and rules were reading what? Purple?
Um, Michael, Rennie, and Barbara.
Barbara Hill.
Yes. Hello. How are you?
Did you see any vouchers?
No.
Did you?
I'll let them know. Peter.
Hi, everyone.
Hey, Mike.
Hi, Michael.
We can be mask free?
I'm mask free. The rules are yes, let's obviously.
Forget it.
What?
Still wired.
I know, get used to it, honey. Is Barbara Grace Potter coming today? She should have queued.
Yes.
Yep.
It's not online on the town office. For me.
You'll see about five minutes from the beginning?
Sorry.
About five minutes before you start?
Uh, no, one minute. But we're waiting on Rennie when we get Barbara, so we'll give her a few minutes.
You go.
Rita. Hi Rita, it's Elisa. Just so you know, Rennie is online. I promoted him, but it's, he's not, I don't know.
Answering, okay. But can he hear us?
Yes, he should be able to hear you. He hasn't texted that he can't.
Okay.
Yeah. Hi.
It's me. I don't know who you are, I'm sorry. Hi, I'm Robert Gilmore. David, how are you? Hi.
Hello.
And you were here, I'm sorry, I shouldn't probably know the answer to this, but you were here because?
Here for a form-based code and assisting with seeker. I'm with the Verge Group in Albany and I live in New Paltz.
When you're not playing rock and roll.
Exactly. Yes.
So if you guys don't mind, it's 6:30 now, maybe two, three more minutes and we can see if court counsel comes in.
I'm pretty sure you have a question.
I was just watching my daughter's trial and Mr. Gartenstein, is that how I say it? Was the impartial judge for the students.
Where's this? Where was this?
It was Kingston versus New Paltz on trial.
And it was Dan Gartenstein?
Yeah, Mr. Gartenstein is the.
My constituent.
Better meeting you here.
Okay, so just like we're all here, we're going to get started. So this is our laws and rules meeting, today is March 16th. And we called the meeting in order and it is 6:31. We have in attendance, first our committee members. Alderman Carl Frankel, Alderman Hill, myself, Rita Workington, which is chair. We have Alderman Oliveri and also Alderman Scott Childress on the line who are attending virtually. Although in attendance is President Shaw, Andrea Shaw. We have the mayor here, Mayor Steve Noble, hello. We have court counsel, Barbara Hill. We have our housing director, Parja, had to pronounce last name.
Star-Dye.
Star-Dye. And we have Mr. David Gilmore.
Correct.
From the Verge Group. The Verge Group, thank you. Okay, and first on our agenda is amending the city code for sidewalk cafes and Mayor Noble is going to talk to us about that. So come on up, sir.
What I thought I would do was just walk through some of the highlights of what we've changed. As I said in my letter, during COVID, we basically, under kind of the kind of emergency powers during that time, we allowed for outdoor dining to expand from sidewalk dining out into parking spaces. And so as part of that process, we created a series of rules and regulations to kind of guide that over the last two summers, basically. And we now are to a point where the COVID emergency is over and we really want to codify the work that we've done and also improve upon it so that we have more clear guidance and regulations. And to also make sure that there's a city process for people to apply and go through review and then get approved. And so in the proposed code updates, we took the current sidewalk cafe legislation that is in the city code and amended it to further expand into outdoor dining as a title. So we gave that a definition. One of the major changes with this code is that we transferred the power of implementation and authority from the Kingston Fire Department to the Kingston Building Department, which makes a whole lot more sense now that the building department is a separate entity from the fire department that used to be combined. And now they're not any longer and so it should be the building department in the code. We also gave some just general rules and regulations and definitions about that outdoor dining can basically take place during nicer weather and that during the winter snow season, outdoor dining is not allowed because of plating and winter maintenance that needs to occur. We also, you know, wanted to just clarify what this law covers, which is basically outdoor dining in, on public property or in the public right of way. So basically sidewalks and our streets. This does not cover anything that happens on private property and that those processes go through the planning board and the building department already. So this is just for public property. So we clarified that part of the code.
So it has the parking spaces, though?
Yes, public parking spaces. But someone's public law, not what I'm, just public parking spaces. So basically anything in the public right of way on the street or on the sidewalk. We basically amended that we need to have insurance from anyone that's wanting to have an outdoor dining. And we basically also put in that if they don't provide insurance, that gives us good cause to revoke the permits for them to have, which again wasn't in here. We also wanted to, which was a change from the first year we did outdoor dining to the second this past summer, is that if you want to have outdoor dining that expands past your business front, that you can't just do that because that could affect other tenants and other properties. So you need to get permission from the tenants and the owners of the building next door if you were to expand in their space.
And that's included, isn't it?
Yeah, because we really wanted to make sure that that was clear and that, and it has to be written consent. So it can't just be verbal, oh yeah, you said it was okay. So the building department will require written consent from those. And we also put in kind of a curfew, so we put in 10:00 PM. That's the time that we had and that we've done this over the last couple of summers. We felt as though that has worked out very well. We got almost no noise complaints for anyone, you know, from 10:00 PM and earlier. If folks went after 10:00 PM, you know, the neighbors did get upset in a few instances that we had to clarify. And we corrected the situation, but 10:00 PM felt like was a reasonable timeframe. Because we do have a mix of residential and commercial in many of our districts and we felt like we didn't want to push the envelope. If there was a special occasion or an event that was happening, there is a legislative wording here that would allow them to basically get a noise permit from the planning department and then, you know, the approval from the city to be able to go past 10:00 PM. One of the things that we heard a lot from businesses was related to how many hours a day is enough to be able to kind of justify giving up the parking space, you know, for outdoor dining. And so we, in this code, felt like it was important to, some kind of stipulations. So we said that, or proposing that six hours per day is the minimum and at least five days a week to be able to have a permanent placement structure that's built out into the street. And if it was less than that, and so say a restaurant wanted to just be open for breakfast and they're only open for three hours, we felt like it was important to, for those situations, when that restaurant, they could apply, they could get approved, but when they're done with breakfast after three hours, they would need to move their stuff out of the street so that the street could then be used for parking at lunch and dinner time. And we felt like that was a good compromise. But again, if you're going to be open for say lunch or dinner, or dinner and, or lunch and breakfast, that is a long enough span to kind of justify a full day. If it's lunch and dinner, we also thought that was enough of a span. So we thought six hours was a good amount of time. We also really wanted to clarify how large these dining establishments could be from the curb. And so we really put in seven feet, that is the size of the average parking spot. And we wanted people to not stand further than that, which could then risk, you know, safety of the drivers, people that are dining. And so we wanted to be able to make sure that that was actually in here. And then also there was some gaps on both sides so that if a car was parking up against the outdoor dining area, that there was space for them to be able to pull it out safely. So we have a two-foot buffer on each side from the parking lines. And then the last, there's a couple of other things that we wanted to cover that was not in our original sidewalk dining section was related to tents and umbrellas, making sure that they are secured and make sure that they're not blocking any street signs, making sure that we try to the best of our ability to kind of follow New York City's model on platform dining. So if you've visited the city during COVID, they, most of theirs have been built on platforms that will allow someone to walk from the sidewalk onto the wooden platform, which then makes them easily accessible because not that there's a step. So not only does that become a tripping hazard for people who are using the outdoor dining areas, it also is create, it creates a, an issue for just accessibility. And so that is something that we've placed in here so that we believe that these outdoor dining areas should be ADA compliant and should have this type of platform setup. We do want to make sure also, and we address it in the language here, that they don't kind of cover any kind of important fixtures, like if we have and need access to one of our sewer access points or drainage structures, they have to be able to, you know, not, you know, block those in a way that we can't reach them. And so that also is in here, that that has to be taken into consideration. Same thing with, we can't have businesses just cutting down trees or trimming trees just to be able to fit their outdoor dining, again, without, you know, or, you know, damaging tree beds to be able to create these. Oh, let's see, we also wanted to be, there's some information about lighting and that we added and as well as fire and electrical code that again was not in here, that the building department felt strongly, we should make sure that we're meeting all of the state standards for any electrical wiring fixtures. And, and reiterating that smoking and, you know, all the types of other like kind of vaping and things like that are not allowed in these outdoor dining areas. That was also not in our code initially, but it's on anyway, so we just wanted to reinforce that. And that is basically the overview of the changes that we proposed in, in the law. And so our hope would be that if upon passage, you know, the building department would make sure that everyone fills out, you know, the sidewalk dining permit, folks have to turn their plans into the building department. The building department will then review those plans, make sure that they meet all of the stipulations that we've now set forth and will then allow people to basically have, you know, access to doing this again this upcoming summer, but just in a more structured way. It will feel and look somewhat similar to what we've done in the past, but we just feel like this will, this kind of will cover our bases, you know, post-cover, and a post-cover rule. Yep. So.
So the mayor to five days a week, will that be the owner's choosing of which days it's going to be?
Yeah. If we wanted to be flexible, because some businesses are Wednesday through Sunday, some are Monday through Friday, so we wanted to have some flexibility there.
Okay. I have a couple of comments and questions. When is the six-hour rule? I imagine restaurants are often, and you have to close at 10:00 and I think a lot of them want to start serving at 5:00. So you're sort of requiring that their dinner only to open at 4:00. So I'm wondering if that's a burden, if five hours might be better?
Yeah. Yeah, and again, it's something that, you know, we, what we want to try to avoid is individual parking spaces, especially in some of our core business districts where we are limited in parking, or of having folks who are really just opening for one meal of the day. Got it. Because then for the whole rest of the 15-plus hours of the day, the space is blocked off and no one can have access. And so we're really trying to encourage those folks who can be, and it doesn't have to be two consecutive meals, but at least kind of the two meals a day or at least a very long kind of like lunch, lunch-ish dinner crowd. And that's why, you know, if they can at least open at four or three, they can get kind of that kind of happy hour kind of crowd.
So my follow-up question is related to that because clearly there are trade-offs between outdoor dining and parking space. I represent War Two, there are all kinds of parking issues there. So, and I'm for this, by the way, totally bullish on it. And I would love your comments about how you sort of manage the trade-off and why you came out with it's better to go this road than not allow outdoor dining.
Yeah, you know, I think one of the things that we saw was that people loved, people were attracted to Kingston, both people that lived here, to trying places by being outdoors and that kind of new streetscape vibe really, we felt also attracted people to Kingston to come and shop in our stores and help keep people employed during the pandemic. And it's also a healthy way to, you know, even with this ongoing, you know, it's still going to be. So that's, there's kind of the health prerogative and health perspective. We do think that with the, with these rules and regulations, we are making it a commitment. A business is going to have to make a commitment to be able to build something that's ADA accessible, something that is more secure, something that will meet all of these guidelines. We are just kind of raising the bar for businesses and so they really will have to make a decision. You know, this isn't just putting a table and chairs and a plant out in a parking spot anymore. So we think that there may be a few less businesses that will participate because of that. And so it is kind of that balanced approach. So we may end up creating some parking spaces, but we will also, I think, still then allow a majority of those who are really going to make an investment, the ability to kind of still have this outdoor dining. Again, we can't control also what the liquor authority does in terms of their rules and regulations. And so that's also, as we say in here, that, you know, we are not in charge of that. We can give people the ability to dine outdoors, but in the end it's up to the state liquor authority to decide whether the dining outdoors includes alcohol or no alcohol. And that is outside of our purview and that also will continue to impact whether this is a hot commodity or not. And then the state liquor authority still has not really decided what they're going to do for this upcoming summer in terms of allowing the, that type of kind of across the sidewalk and out into the street kind of dispensing, that's really up to the state liquor authority. So that will also impact the, the number of businesses that may choose to participate.
Andrew? Yeah, great questions. Is there, so when somebody, an applicant fills out the application to building safety, is there a timeline that the building safety department has to get back to them or is it just?
Yeah, they're going to try their best. I mean, they, they kind of try to prioritize. These are relatively, you know, simple reviews of, you know, and we tried to set enough parameters in here that as long as they're proposing what's in here, it should be a relatively quick review. But we do expect that, we would encourage you to not wait till the last minute because the building departments are busy.
Right, whereas I didn't want to put, you know.
Yeah, we preferred not to. We kind of wanted to let it just, you know, go get fit right into the queue and it may not be an instant approval process. So hopefully starting this process now, you know, the real outdoor dining season technically started until May 1st-ish, when it's kind of warm enough to dine, but you know, I'm sure that there will be some that will want to start in April.
All right, so do the best we can. And then my second question, I'd like to tell it's with the, you know, if they're going into their neighbor's area to ask. But I mean, I've heard complaints about just losing parking in general. So even if it's the parking spot in front of their business, that's okay. You don't need to ask your neighbors about that because technically parking for any of the businesses in the area. So it's how does that work? It's just that parking spot in front of your business, you don't need to get a petition from your neighbors or whatever is right charges, but.
Yeah.
So that's, they could use that one, they just can't use the others without permission.
Yes.
All right.
That's all right, okay.
And then my third question is, I know this is awesome, so I'm just thinking like what were issues last year? Garbage.
Yes, and so we included, and I forgot to mention that, thanks for bringing that up, we actually included that.
I didn't see that.
If you have table service, you don't need to provide receptacles because you have a waiter, waitress that's going to come and take your food and clear out the tables. But if you are a restaurant that is doing this and you do not have table service, you are required to place your own receptacles outside in your area, which includes recycling and trash. And so we did include that.
Yeah, I just, so last year going to restaurants, even with table service, something there. So just throw it away in the city. So it is, hopefully they'll know that they need to.
Yes, and so now.
Because otherwise, you know, it's just going to be a mass uptown, it's already, the bins are already full constantly. No.
Yeah, so we, you know, most folks who have at least, you know, waiter, waitress service generally will, you know, bring back plates in, wash them, have to do all that. So they shouldn't be then finding a city receptacle, but there are lots of kind of take-it-out-ish places who we had, we struggled with last time. And so we basically got takeout containers to be brought outside and then add their way into our receptacles. So this will hopefully, hopefully, you know, set the rules so that DPW has something to enforce.
Yeah. All right.
I'm going to get Barbara and then I'm going to come to you, okay, Michael?
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, I was just wondering about like businesses, they may not be as economically stable yet or new because some, you know, they may not be able to afford such a platform that's ADA compliant and get a handle on hours. So I'm just wondering how that's, you know, it's almost like geared towards those businesses that are already solid enough to do this, right?
Yeah, and I think a part of this is that we also want to be able to, businesses are going to then also need to be able to add more staff to be able to accommodate more tables and they're going to have to, you know, be able to manage multiple dining rooms, basically. And also the complications of people dining outside when it starts to rain, what do they do with them? And so there does need to be some capacity at the business level to be able to manage a program like this. And so I think that it does kind of put more burden on them. And I think in this kind of situation being that they're kind of, this is happening out in the public street, we kind of need them to be more solid.
It's an exchange of goods in a sense.
Yeah, to be able to just make sure that they are able to kind of manage well a program. And maybe a startup business or a restaurant or business that maybe is still kind of getting their finances in place to operate a dining room, this may be a lot to take on in their first year of business if it's not part of their business model already.
Right, and for some businesses, it's like, it's an excellent thing because they're doubling their capacity and ability to have business. And then enforcement of some of these, that's done by the.
The building department.
Building department, yes. And they have enough staff to do that or is not such a heavy lift or?
Yeah, you know, we had, you know, last year about a little less than two dozen total businesses participate. And as part of the fire inspection process already that businesses have to go through, you know, and we had the sidewalk cafe, most of the businesses that utilize this already had or were permitted for sidewalk cafes, but that were just on their sidewalks, so we had to inspect those too. And so I don't think that.
It's not a horrendous thing.
With the, compared to some of the other initiatives, like working on with the building department, this one's, it's still one more thing, but it is something that they, they had to do a lot of work last summer anyway, checking. Because people were kind of doing whatever they wanted with structures and roofs and.
It was very festive.
It was very festive, but there wasn't, we had to do a lot of this inspection. And it's, it's always easier to tell people what we want advanced until, until last year, they built things and then we were like, oh no. And that's, that's no fun.
This is great.
Michael, you had a hand up?
Yes, so overall I have to say I'm 100% in favor of this. You know, I see the benefits, but I do have a couple of questions. One, how are we going to verify written consent? Because I could easily say, I, you know, Carl say that yes, you can use the spot in front of my apartment and I have absolutely no problem with that, but are we going to have a verification process to verify that Carl's really Carl?
Well, it is his porch.
So my thought is that, you know, we will need written consent, you know, from the owners and tenants of the building next door. And I think if we get. And I think if we get that, and I think the quickest way that that will be verified is when the tenant or owner of that building calls us and says, why is there outdoor dining in front of my place? I didn't approve that. We will then very quickly be able to tell that we got some fraudulent paperwork and we'll be able to revoke the permit for that. So that's my thought anyway. People are very, they're very protective of their space in front of their building. As soon as something starts happening in front of it that they didn't know about, I'm sure we will hear about it.
And that would be, I mean, there's penalties for offense because that would be an offense. So that's $250, right there.
Yeah.
Yep. My second question is, does the building department have the resources to monitor this throughout the, the season? I.e. to check that, you know, they're, they're maintaining the seven feet and the two feet from the, the cars? Like, do we have the resources from the building department for them to, you know, not on a daily basis, but, you know, throughout the season, do spot checks?
Yeah, you know, I think that through the permitting process, you know, we're going to be, you know, for instance, if we get an application from one restaurant, we go, we get them all set up. A few weeks later, we'll probably be at the restaurant next door helping them get set up. And I think that that's a way for our building department to be kind of on the streets, looking at what other folks are doing. And one of the things that I think we also depend on are, are the public to let us know if things are amiss. And in this situation, I think that the businesses themselves will really help us in determining like, hey, why does Joe not have two feet, but you're making me have two feet? Those are probably the quickest ways for us to also be able to kind of get those things rectified. But I do think that for the amount that we'll be having here in the city, we'll be okay in terms of these types of inspections throughout the season. And once they get created once, these are not going to be as portable as say some of the other ones where people were just using planters and the planters could then move around. You know, these are going to be more permanent structures or semi-permanent structures from, you know, that will be there.
Okay, and last thing I have is kind of two parts. Just using North Front Street and as example between Crown and Wall, if all the restaurants or places out there that set up, we're losing seven parking spaces, which equates to about 40% of the parking spaces in that section. So I think that's something we do need to consider and one of the other things, and forgive me, I'm using Google Maps, so it could be inaccurate as of now, but it looks like in that stretch, there's only two handicap parking locations and they are on the closer end to Crown Street. And again, this may be opening up a can of worms for another committee, but would there be something we could do to possibly maybe put another handicap spot closer to the Wall Street end of North Front?
Directly, there is, directly in front of the former parking garage site. There are two handicap parking spots right in front of the trees and.
Okay, yeah, I didn't go down that far.
Yeah.
Okay.
But yeah, I do think that, you know, there is, again, the kind of give and take with parking. You know, it is one of those things where one of the proposed projects that we'll talk about next week is part of the American Red Skin Plan project is wayfinding. One of the biggest things that we hear from the public is that they don't know where to park when they can't find on-street parking, because we really don't have any signs that direct people to where our parking lots are. And so being able to have some better signage so that folks know how to get either into the Shrank Drive lot or the two North Front Street lots or, you know, even D Stadium full of empty parking spots on a, most times. And so it's just really about doing some better signage. And I think that that's really critical as we kind of explore that. And that's something that we are going to be working on very, very soon to kind of expand in those areas where we don't have a lot of parking. And I, and I do think that we're hopeful to also continue to identify new parking as it becomes available with some of our partners in the area. But that's, it's a valid point, Alderman, Alberian. We're just gonna try and keep balancing that parking loss versus, you know, extra, you know, retail and, you know, dining. So, thank you.
Renny, did you have any questions?
That was it for me, sorry.
Thank you. Mayor Noble, so you said last year, building and safety, how did they do the inspections? They did like spot inspections or they?
Usually when there was something wrong. And so if they saw something that someone built.
Oh, just by seeing it?
Cause there was no inspection process last year. From, for, related to the kind of, that's like out in the street. And so they would basically either get complaints or they would just be driving by a town and saw this structure that just kind of appeared. And so this will allow us to be able to just have some more firm rules.
Okay. Anyone have any other questions?
Not really a question, just a suggestion. I Googled parking lots in Kingston, nothing comes up. You know, but if I Google parking lots and granted it's New York City, but if I granted parking lots in New York City, that's gonna pop up on a map. Now, I know you were talking about the wayfinding thing, but you know, especially with our influx of people moving up here from the city, I think it may be something to consider looking into, you know, really getting our parking lot digital footprint out there. So inevitably, when someone does do that, you know, parking in Kingston, they pop up.
Thank you.
You might want to try looking somewhere else that actually has municipal lots? Because maybe when you look at New York City, what you're actually finding is privately owned lots.
Totally.
A thousand, pay $40 a day to park. I'm old, I think 1990.
Okay, so if there's no more questions, I'm gonna read the committee report that Mayor Noble sent to us. In an effort to codify outdoor dining practices, developments developed since the COVID-19 pandemic began. The common council adopts as attached updated language in section 346 of the code related to outdoor dining and, and, and adjacent to all city streets and sidewalks. I get a motion for discussion? Renny, Michael? I'm very informal. Are you guys really being so informal in here? Yeah, okay. Okay, good. Any discussion? All right, we'll call for the vote. All in favor? Any opposers? None? All right, Mayor, there you have it. Thank you.
See you guys up soon.
Okay, moving on, next on our agenda, we have the secret board, the rezoning initiative and having Director Bartek Star-Dag.
Star-Dag.
Star-Dag. I'll get it, one of these days. He's gonna come and talk to us about that.
Okay. So this relates to the adoption of the Form Base Code, which as you know, that process is ongoing currently. That Form Base Code will prescribe development to be wide, go to floor, where it is adopted. Because it has potential for environmental significance. The adoption of that will require an environmental review in accordance with CECL regulations. So I'm just gonna briefly summarize this process and then explain the regulations in front of you tonight. So the first step is to assign a lead agency, in this case, it's the common council. The next step is to make a determination of environmental significance. In this case, it is a positive one. Next step is scoping. So this is by which the lead agency, in this case, the common council, defines the potentially significant adverse impacts related to the action of adopting the Form Base Code. And these potentially significant adverse actions will be addressed in the draft environmental impact statement. As part of the scoping process, there will be a public participation process that is included in the common period as well as a public meeting. And then the final step is to actually draft the environmental impact statement. This will precisely summarize the project and evaluate any potential adverse environmental impacts, any potential alternatives and any potential mitigation methods that should be adopted. So that is the process that we'll be following with here. And there are two separate resolutions in front of you tonight. The first one is to declare that the common council is the lead agency and that this is a type one action, therefore requiring an environmental impact statement. The second one is declaring a determination of positive environmental significance and to set a date for the public scoping session, which is proposed as April 21st. David, do you want to add anything to that process? Otherwise, we can get into the community objectives.
It seems excellent, the presentation that you provided. I think the common council probably, or the committee members probably recognize that most actions that you're undertaking require consideration on the state environmental quality review act. In this case, you're preparing a generic environmental impact statement to evaluate the potential effects of the Form Base Code. We prepared, we prepared a full environmental assessment form as required by CECL and that informs the development of the scoping document. The scoping document is essentially your roadmap of the information that we're going to analyze and assemble within a generic environmental impact statement. And a generic environmental impact statement is essentially a lot of modeling of potential effects as opposed to a more narrow approach with just, just an environmental impact statement. So essentially, this is your cookbook or outline of what we're doing within the scoping document. And you, you, you use that scoping document to confirm that we've addressed all of the topics that the public and your consultants have recommended that you address within the environmental review process.
Also included in your packet tonight is an overview of the community outreach that we've done so far as part of the rezoning process and that we're planning on doing once the actual draft of the zoning is released next month. So this is obviously a critical piece of the overall rezoning process. I will, I will say this tonight and I will also remind council members of this throughout the spring. But if you have any recommendations of individuals or organizations that need to be part of this rezoning process, please let me know to make those recommendations to you. And that can be tonight or throughout the spring as the public process will be ongoing over the course of several months.
Okay, does anyone have any questions?
No involved agencies?
There, I believe there's a list of over 15, I think, discovering.
Oh, it looks like it's our lead agency says the only involved agency.
So there's, there's one entity that can adopt the Form Base Code. And that entity that can adopt the Form Base Code is the common council. Because that's, you're the, you're the legislative body. There are other involved entities such as the Landmarks Preservation Commission. Is it the Heritage Area Commission? Ulster County Planning Board, which is provided for referral of a policy document. And there's also identification of interested agencies and of course, the public is being consulted.
Yeah, no, I just was curious because in the opening letter, because that's the only involved agency in them. So, there are involved.
Yes.
Well, and so the common council, we, the lead, or the lead agency that will actually adopt the Form Base Code, but these other agencies will have input as far as how it's made up.
They have a timeline when they would come after the feedback, it's 30 days from.
April, by April 5th.
April 5th. And so, and I actually have one other question, this is more just logistics, but for the public scoping session, would that be led by the common council or is it just gonna be led by?
Well, it is technically hosted by the common council.
Well, is that something big, common, they were 21? So I'm presiding over the process.
I am prepared to preside over that meeting with, with the merge. So I don't, I don't think you need to be involved specifically.
Can I ask for counsel advice on that?
I think preside means two different things when we're using it. I think you're meaning, you mean take the substantive lead in the discussions, but you're talking about presiding over the council's meetings. So I think you can designate someone who can preside instead, but that's not the same sort of substantive.
Yeah, I mean, I just cannot get out of my obligation. I'm a huge concert that night, so.
What time is it?
It's any evening event.
Evening event?
Yes.
That's April 21st?
So I, I want to say, I, I think I'm stating the obvious here, but what we're talking here is strictly procedural, right? There's nothing substantive that's on the table for us to discern or vote on. This is just process stuff that we're signing off on, correct?
Yes.
Yes. Right, I'm supposed to be recording.
I'm sorry. How about all the walking ill?
I'm sorry.
I'm very informal.
So I've been on a few of the, maybe this isn't the time, of the Zoom meetings. And just as a, you know, wondering in terms of getting community involvement, it seems very structured. Like I remember looking at the waterfront one, you know, down by the waterfront and my wife and I were like going, but how about this? But how about, you know, put in the chat something and then, but it was very prescribed and it felt a little off-putting in a sense of like I was imagining, like if I were somebody who lived down there and had a question about, you know, like, or my wife scolds actively, so what's the impact down there? Like, so it was, it was just a little, I didn't find the engagement was robust enough. And maybe because there was a time constraint for the Zoom and how much had to be covered. But I guess we're talking about, again, procedural things. But I, I think we've been concerned a bit about what's the community engagement part of a lot of the processes that we have been looking at, I think we are reporter. So I think this is great, what's laid out.
Yeah, I was.
In the, in the nitty gritty of it.
I'll just quickly respond if I can just respond personally to you. I'm dazzled by her and the process. And you were, gee, I wish we had had more sort of personal opportunity for interaction as mine. I thought it was brilliantly designed to get sort of popcorn feedback and ideas and questions that could be processed and due course. So you're not good enough as mine.
And I do think, and kind of going in between the two, I, I do think there's room for improvement because there always is room for improvement. But I do think it was, it is, and it continues to be one of the more active community engagement that I've seen in five years for them.
But I, I, I just want to clear up, I didn't say it was no good.
I, I got that.
I mean, I've, I've been going on them. If I didn't thought they were of value, it wouldn't. And I think even, I'm sorry that the walking tours were canceled, there was the snow and I would look forward to that again and I, you know, so I can't say it hadn't been fun. It's been a fun process and a great team.
It could always be better.
Yeah, it was all that little piece of how, you know.
I see it getting better going forward too. As a matter of fact, as Andrew said, I really appreciate the engagement, the, all the work that you put into it and that you're going to continue to put into it. And have been some of the best, I'll say, process, process that, that the city has used so far with hitting this out and also going forward. So thank you for that. Because we have been talking about community engagement a lot lately.
So I'm always concerned about literacy level. And a lot of us profess to have high literacy levels, some of us don't. You know, some people don't like to read, some people, whatever. But that's when I'm listening to language, I'm always listening for that. And like if a different, you know, segment of our population. And like, if a different, you know, segment of our population might be able to figure out how to, you know, get on these or something, it's just something to think about, not that I'm saying it's not, you know.
Yeah, I do agree that the virtual setting is imperfect, for sure.
Oh, this is rough.
You know, we had two meetings last month that were virtual. And I think we realized from the first night, the Albany and Hurley, Albany meeting, that it was really rushed. We got a feedback that was too fast. So we tried to make an improvement on that the second night. And I think, you know, going forward, it's a mix of that types. So there's walking tours, there's in-person smaller meetings, there's citywide meetings. So it's trying to get at it from different means.
I did have, and I know two Aldermen here, Rita and Michael, I know they're both going to be doing board meetings, too, with one of the, the community member who's been incredibly active, first on the zoning task force, Junior, as I know you now, who is going to help lead those. So that's another way for council members, you know, who want to walk the block of better community engagement is to post board meetings. I mean, they don't always get huge turnout or much turnout, but.
They get the people, the people that is focused on it and worried about it, they're the ones that show up. And that might, might be a small number, but those are the ones that are interested in it.
And Junior has expressed his desire to help out in any way. And I actually believe in the meeting that he expressed that, so hopefully he'll change his mind while putting you on the spot, right? So Randy, the Alderman, listening to have already kind of signed up for that. Maybe a good idea.
So during, I went to a lot, it was, you know, I'd just gotten to office. I was wiped out, and I was weak, like a charrette, so, but I went, diligently. But I, there wasn't anything planned for work one, like a walk. And I had asked, could we have one? And it said, yes, a consultant could be, and then I asked again, but it kind of, I guess, so I was feeling like, oh, it's not as much of a priority as these other areas. And then I kind of let go of it. But there, as I've been talking with constituents about it, they would love it if somebody came. And that's just talking, not even like promoting it. It's like, wow, I would love to go on that. And so I don't know how to go about that.
Well, maybe, so I have actually posted, instead of board meetings, I did more walks when I represented a board. And I would get really good turnout for something like that. So even if you don't have the consultants here for, you know, like the charrette week that they did, if you want to do something like that, you know, I just, I could set you up a junior or if Roderick wants to do it, you know, just walk around the neighborhood and have people who know more than, even I know about Form Base Code going with that. Everybody gets a little fresh air and exercise.
Well, it's great, because.
And they were, they were very popular when I did it. I had way more attendance on walks than I did with meetings.
And a lot of dogs would show up, too.
In your board, you actually have a lot of dogs.
There's some dogs, but no, I think that would be great if I could set one up.
I'd be glad to support you.
Because the big issue is like the whole slow down Kingston, traffic speeding, going through signs and all of that. And talking to the civil engineer, is that what, Rich or Rick?
Rich Hall, Mr. Hall, part of the team.
He'd always taught me about the three Es, which I can never remember what they are.
Enforcement, education, and.
Engineering.
I was going to get it, John.
I see you ready.
So I'm all, I really, I kept it in his card. And, you know, I think that a lot of residents would show up to do that. And I think that's actually a theme to a lot of the words, so thanks.
Put me down for the walking tour, if you could. I want to check in with one of you, because that's a great idea.
Yeah, I'm happy to give you what I did.
Junior's contacted.
Do you want me to connect you with Junior?
Yeah, I want to start in that direction.
So Hurley Avenue was in my board. And that weird intersection, not so great intersections and crossing and all that. So was there a physical tour of that already, or was it just virtual? I kind of lost my, you know, my gist.
It was the focus of the meeting, virtual meeting. And it was, my walking tour was never officially planned. But certainly we can do one if you need.
Okay, I forgot to look at the video, because I was, yeah, I'll do that.
I did do flyers along that street, and I can personally attest to the terrible state of the sidewalks.
To the what?
Terrible state of the sidewalks.
You went for their walking tour, right?
Yeah.
That's the one that I attended.
Yes.
Okay. Randy.
Thank you, Rita. I just wanted to note that, you know, I always share the concern about how much exposure we are able to provide for the public in general. And in this particular case, there was a large amount of informal discussion about this whole project. And so I think that, on the one hand, you know, there's the list in the, in the secret document here. But there was a, I was at many meetings that took place at people's houses informally, you know, because Junior and I and Tanya and some other folks organized a group. They actually put up a website that ran parallel to the cities. So, you know, I think that this is not a great example of community involvement, both because of the formal aspects developed by the consultant, but also because of the excitement that the whole idea generated among a significant portion of the citizenry beyond just the consultants and the public officials.
Yeah, first I was confused about the two parallel websites. I thought, which is the real one, you know? And then I thought, oh, so I was getting two notifications about things. And then I was like, oh, this is a good thing. Right, so thanks, Randy, because I was putting that together, that it just wasn't this renegade group of people. Oh, that was a little bit, no, but they're very committed to this process. And it's, it's very great to see.
Okay, were there any other questions for Partek? No? Okay. So then I have the committee report. And this committee report is just so the Common Council can be declared as lead agency for this project. The resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, determining that the Kingston Forward Res zoning Project is a Type 1 action and that the Common Council act as lead agency in the State Environmental Quality Review Act, SECRE, Process Pursuant to 6 NYCRR, Part 6, 1, 7. Motion to discuss?
I move the re-discuss.
Scott, can I have a second? Any discussion? Okay. So all in favor of the Kingston Common Council being declared as lead agency? Aye, aye. All right. And it doesn't look like anyone is opposing it. No, thank you, so moved. So thank you, Partek, for that. I have one more committee report to read.
I'm sorry, Rita, can I just ask a question? Because I'm looking at the agenda. So I see the committee report you just read. And it says scheduling a public scoping session. And then in the resolution, which I guess may be changed, but right now it says April 16th. So do we need to have that date? Because first of all, April 16th is not April 21st. And also, April 16th is a Saturday. So it may just, do we need to have that date locked in right now?
Uh, yes.
Okay, so the resolution is on the agenda, that's all.
Uh, you might be looking at an older one. Should be the 21st, is the correct.
Where does it say that in the, in the resolution itself?
In the actual resolution, the committee report does not have the date.
I don't see it.
But that could be, that's just clerical, they could change that.
Sure, is the question whether or not the resolution that is the committee report has to have a specific date? It does not have.
Well, it does. And it has dates that is not.
So it seems sort of odd to me that it would have a specific date instead of saying, we'll set the date to be, or to notify the public.
Yeah, it does have a specific date, so, and it has a Saturday.
Okay.
So, you know, the resolution, it doesn't need, I just wanted to point it out. It doesn't change, the committee report doesn't change the vote. That could be, the resolution could just be treated. So I just, will you take it from here?
Yes, I will. Thank you.
Thank you. And I was just making sure that, were there two committee reports that you had on for the?
Yeah, I just, I just interrupted, sorry. I just wanted to get.
So Partek, you'll take care of that, Dana. But we can go forward with the committee report that we had. Yes? Okay.
Yeah.
And so the second, the second committee report that I had is resolution of the Common Council, the City of Kingston, New York, issuing a positive declaration in connection with the Kingston Forward Res zoning Project under the State Environmental Quality Review Act, SECRE, Process Pursuant to 6 NYCRR, Part 617, and scheduling a public scoping session. Motion to discuss? Charles, second? Any discussion on this? Everybody okay with this and understand what this is about? All right, all in favor? No opposers, it doesn't look like, and so that is awesome. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
For all your work, all your work, thank you. Looking forward, looking forward to it.
Great, excited about it.
All right. Where's my agenda? That's not the agenda. We have the amending city code, city code for FOIL requests. And Corp Counselor Grace Pollard is going to come talk to us about that.
Sure, I don't have the printout of what you have in front of you, but I think it's pretty minor what's moved. If you have questions, we can fill them in in the language. But the proposed changes basically align the code with what we've actually been doing for a number of years. There are some technical corrections that should have been made some time ago. For example, the clerk I have here is currently in code as both the records access officer and the appeals officer, but the city hasn't been willing that way for some time. It also identifies Garen Drive as the address, that's not correct. So Assistant Corporation Counsel Madjankowski went through line by line just to see, okay, well, what is out of date and needs to be updated? So there's a redlined version of the changes that actually have to happen. And that's much more specific than I think you need the committee report to, to say. You would have to, basically, those changes align with what we do and then use the exact language of the FOIL statute, because there were some terms that were slightly different. So it's cleaning up, it's like clean up. But, you know, if you want to go through line by line, is it clean up? We can do that, but none of them change what we do. They simply make our code accurate.
Makes sense, okay. Any questions? No? Okay, so you didn't send me a committee report.
You should have received one, because I prepared one. And so Janet brought that over to Alisa.
I mean, I can write it out here, I just, I just don't see it.
No, I don't want you to have to do more work.
Okay, I mean, do you have that? Can you send, I have.
Because there's a committee report and it annexes about three pages that have black line materials.
Unless I overlook.
Unless it's beyond the website.
Alisa, are you there?
Well, there's one here on the chairs to sign the committee report.
Yeah, sweet, I'm here.
Did you get something, did you get committee reports with the exact changes from Corp Counsel yesterday or today? That you could forward to me?
No, I did, no, I did not.
Yeah, I don't see it.
I have the one about the authorizing chair, the chair, sorry. I don't have the other, though.
Sorry, oh, the chair, yeah, they should have been one on top of the other. I think Janet took them over to D yesterday. And we had one.
Usually it's in our packet, too.
Yeah, I have that one.
So either what I could do is, if you want to table the vote, we go through the other thing and I can forward, I can announce it and forward to everyone. If you want to take the vote before making a determination, or how.
What do you want, guys, want to do? I mean, you told us what it's about. I don't think we have any questions or not believe you on it or anything, so.
As your process advisor, I want you to see what you're doing.
I am, so.
Okay.
Can we just talk about your next thing? Then John's been talking to that, I think that it's.
We'd like to override you, then.
Mark, if you're ready to help, we'll go to the other.
Just because there are specific corrections and some titles and things, I want you to see what you're looking at.
Okay.
But the second issue is, are going, do you need to move on to that?
Yeah, we can move on to, everybody, what else? Table on that one for now, and then we'll move on to number four.
So I can't, because I'm not on the committee, so Carl.
So we'll get a motion to.
I would make a table. Table is. And so until such time as our court can, so can't provide us with the materials.
Second.
Second.
All in favor? And all in favor? Okay, thank you.
Kicking the can down.
All right, so we can move on to, I didn't, number four.
That one's even easier. I think we've discussed this a couple of times just to make sure that the rules the council adopted are always expanded and improved upon to accommodate the practices that you want to govern the body. So the one we talked about was verbal authorization for remote participants to allow the chair to sign committee reports on that. And that really is just amending Rule 1, Sub 2.
Just procedurally, so everybody knows it all didn't should be a problem, but when we, when we vote to amend, when we vote to amend the rules, it has to be a supermajority vote.
And would then, we do that on the.
On the council floor, yeah. We just need six out of the nine of you to vote in favor for it to pass. Not, doesn't affect your, just since I'm thinking it, you may not be aware of that.
Yes. How, I'm so discombobulated with this open meetings, like today, right? Laws expire for some of the changes to open meetings law. So I thought we were going all the way back to in-person after today.
So without going into the whole of the open meetings law, the open meetings law is, is one thing. We've been operating under an executive order during COVID, this COVID period, that sits on top of the open meetings law and allows us to do some more things due to the state of emergency, but that, the new one, is expired today. So, and looking back at the open meetings law itself, it is to always authorize remote participation by members of the body subject to some requirements. For example, there is a state where the remote participants are located. It actually has to allow members of the public to participate from that remote location, although I believe there was a memorializing resolution, this body.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's just a. It hadn't heard anything.
Well, the reason I raise it is because this is not the only municipality that has raised concerns about this. And to be, say, you're following NICOM's updates, it's something that a lot of bodies have brought to the attention.
Do you mind if I felt like some of us realizing that that was December that we passed it? So we passed a moratorium resolution, which is basically us as a body saying, to the higher ups than us, so in this case, it's our state representatives, can you please consider this? This is what we would like, this Kingston Common Council would like, this memorializing resolution is. And it is to amend the open meeting law so that we don't have, like, right now, as of tomorrow, Randy and Mike would have had to have on the agenda where they are right now. And if somebody from the public shows up at their house, they need to allow them in, if they're in their house. And it has to be on the agenda 24 hours ahead of every meeting. So that's something that we actually will need to adhere to starting tomorrow.
If they give their addresses.
Well, it's not just giving the addresses. You're supposed to provide the addresses so that members of the public can participate from those remote locations.
Okay, so if they, well, so if they're, they don't have to be in the person's house already.
You know, this, I found this baffling, too, coming from a jurisdiction where this didn't come up very often. But in fact, the law is written such that the public should have this, essentially, you can think about it as a public, a space where the public's business is being done, so the public has an opportunity. I think that, like many, I mean, we're getting sort of into advice here, so, you know, just. just sharing what other meetings counties have also raised. There are serious concerns, we're not done with a pandemic, there are violence concerns and all sorts of reasons why people's homes aren't necessarily the right place to allow, particularly when you have the public's ability to view exactly what's going on at that location. So if you want to have a separate discussion out of this meeting about some of the advocacy that's going on in these counties, I'm happy to forward that. But that's a long, when you're handling that, what happens.
To know, well, yeah, I wasn't getting.
Yeah, that is, it's on my to-do list, send out an email to explain a lot of that, so. Thank you for helping. And I have a few follow-up questions, but I can ask you some other point also there, but.
Okay, did anyone have any other questions regarding this, this item? No? Okay, so I'm going to read the committee report that I have before me. And this is the common council's current rules do not expressly address whether and how council members participating in meetings remotely can authorize other persons to sign committee reports on their behalf. The proposed resolution will amend common council rule one, two. Was that Roman number one?
Roman number one.
One, two. Okay, sub two. Adding a sentence to allow members participating remotely to verbally authorize the committee chair to sign a committee report on the remote participants' behalf. That was a mouthful. Do we understand that?
Yes.
Yes? Okay. Yes?
Can I just?
Certainly. Well, let me do a, let me do a motion to, let me do a motion to discuss. Motion?
Sure, motion to discuss.
Second. All right, Michael O'Berry.
I have a question.
Okay, and discussion.
I have my question.
You want to, you want Andrea to go, I'll come back to you?
Oh, so if we vote this in now, just for example, we could.
It has to.
Yeah, we're voting this out of four, out or to stay in committee right now, just out of committee.
It's also.
So that will be worked.
Okay, so this would be, this would happen, but I have no idea what it's March.
Like next month.
It would happen later.
After, yes.
Yeah.
Gotcha, all right.
So I didn't think of this before, just now, so I apologize, but what if the chair is remote?
So I, if, if your chair is remote, I think.
The chair.
I never, I didn't know that.
Well, the chair could designate someone, right?
So.
The chairs can designate people to sit in for them.
Or I guess the chair could have the committee report.
With them?
That's true.
Or come in and sign, or could we do it like that? Does the chair actually have to be present at the meeting?
So these are all great questions. The current rules do not provide that level of specificity about the chair's required location. So as written, is there a, there's a draft resolution in front of you, is there?
No.
So, I mean, this is your space to craft that. I mean, the, the chair can be anywhere, but the way that I drafted the committee report was to place the responsibility for the signature on the chair, which seemed like the right person?
Right, no, that makes sense, it's just, you know, if there's an issue and the chair is attending virtual, because they can't be here, then I don't know what the language would be if we could tweak.
I suppose we can say as long as the chair has a committee, committee report with them, which we could always get.
Well, you're actually raising a second issue, that if the chair is remote.
Then, then it's the other way around. It's then the chair is gathering signatures for the in-person people as well as the virtual. So it could be worded in a way that the chair can, instead of saying the chair can sign for virtual participants, the chair can sign for participants.
This is your legislative action.
Yeah, absolutely. So I, well, obviously, like I said, I didn't think of this, even though I knew this was coming and it just popped into my mind, so I'm just brainstorming here. So we word it, so it's the chair, it gives permission for the chair to sign for participants.
Yeah.
And you just have to give verbal feedback to that. It means to say it's a finance meeting right now, and Rennie is, is virtual, and therefore you could give, he has the committee report, because the chair should always have the committee report.
Mm-hmm.
That's, so then it would be the in-person, to kind of just take away the, I think we just have to embrace that one word.
We just have to say out remotely.
Just cross it out?
Mm-hmm.
But that.
Before I do that, though, Michael, I saw your hand, so.
I was just going to say something along the lines of, you know, typically when someone has to recuse themselves, we just appoint someone else as the chair. But if there's no, like, if it's not like rock steady that the chair has to be in person, then I'm fine with just kind of taking that verbiage out and leaving it how Andrea just said.
Yeah, the chair doesn't need to, there's nothing in the rules or in open meeting laws that the chair has to be present in person, although typically that's how it works, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's, I'm fine, yeah, I'm on board.
If I could just add one thing in response, I mean, if you want to create, if you want to further amend your rules to say that the chair must be in person, you can, you can do that, but.
I think that'd be.
I definitely don't want to say that, but there's two chairs here, but I don't want to say that without others who, like, talking with the other two chairs. So, I mean, maybe that could be another discussion for another amendment, but I, I'm not comfortable doing that tonight.
Yes.
As a new person to the council, so far, the chairs seem to be the ones to know how to use that. So if they're not here, it's a little freaky until somebody arrives.
I talk to the chair every time, and if, if they're not going to be here, I've always been able to, you know, we figure it out. So that's something that the chairs and I have worked through, it isn't just magic.
Okay, okay, Mom and Dad, let some higher powers take care of it. Because I've shown up, no one's been here, and I've been like, am I in the right place? And then.
There was, there was a time where it didn't, yeah, there was a mistake and we.
The person arrived just in time, but it, I just wanted to know how that worked. And that was part of the, if they needed to be present, that's one of the responsibilities of the chair.
But, okay. Okay, so I'm, okay, so what I'm going to do then is strike out the word remotely on this committee report. Do I need to read it again?
Yes.
I would appreciate it.
Yes.
Okay.
Legally.
All right. The common council's current rules do not expressly address whether and how council members participating in meetings remotely can authorize other persons to sign committee reports on their behalf. The proposed resolution will amend common council rule, Roman number one, sub two, adding a sentence to allow members participating to verbally authorize the committee chair to sign a committee report on the remote, on the participants' behalf. So we struck out remote twice on the.
I think you should be sure all three times.
Three.
Yeah, you're right. I will read it again.
The rules don't say that.
From my own edification.
Third time's a charm, right?
We should do a slow check and private check.
Okay. The common council's current rules do not expressly address whether and how council members participating in meetings can authorize other persons to sign committee reports on their behalf. The proposed resolution will amend common council rule, Roman number one, sub two, adding a sentence to allow members participating to verbally authorize the committee chair to sign a committee report on the participants' behalf.
Perfect.
Okay. All in favor? Yes. No one opposing, and so that is moved out of committee.
But Rennie and Mike, you do need to comment and sign these.
These, because it won't take place until next.
I know. Government doesn't move.
So sign it to say that I authorized it to not sign it.
Yes, you got it.
Yes. So should this pass out of council, just to be clear, this takes effect in the May.
As long as, yes, if the council of six of you vote in favor and able, unable, that it will be signed into law and then it will, the next, by now.
Okay.
Some of them are running upstairs to look for that other report.
And meanwhile, we'll get John up.
So the only reason why I'm raising it now is because if there's some need, i- if there's a discussion that sort of ventures into the need for advice, I hope I'm going to be immediately quick.
Okay.
Is that document?
I do.
Before you go down, in case, can you pause?
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so we're moving to old business now, and this is Resolution twenty eight of twenty twenty-two. This was the resolution that we sent back to committee, Franklin Street. Secret process was sent back to committee for further review. And so now we're going to discuss that, that is back on the agenda today. So our city engineer is John Schulteis is here. What?
Yes, good evening. I was here a month ago, and I know there were, there were a number of questions about, you know, why we believe this to be type two action. Since that time, I think we have undertaken some additional public involvement and want to thank the chair for attending a public information meeting we had a week ago along with members of the community. I think it was helpful to answer a lot of questions about how this is going to affect, this affect Franklin Street. And, you know, the upshot of all of this is that we stand by the original request, which is a finding for type two action. So in this case, it's quoting a specific part of the New York regulations that talks about rehabilitation and repair of existing facilities on the same site, which is exactly what we're doing here on Franklin Street. Franklin Street is not being widened, you know, or be visiting city right-of-way limits, it's not being made longer, it's not adding travel lanes. So the project we're talking about is, is a type two action. So I'm just here tonight to ask for the council to.
Okay, thank you. So first, let me say thank you to you, John, for the extra step that you took when we sent this back to committee for further review. You know, you got right on it and said, okay, you know, people are asking for this, and this is what they want, we're going to give it to them. So I really appreciate that, I think it went a long way. And I think the public also appreciated it, that that step was taken. And I, I think that's the way that we're supposed to do things. And so, so thank you for doing that. Any questions for John? No? Okay, so.
I just, I know the, the main reason this was sent back was for that public meeting, was secret talked about at all at that? Because I know people did bring up concerns about, like, they, they felt that it wasn't type two. So was that actually brought up and resolved, do you think, for the most part?
I feel it was, we had some.
Understood.
We had some, we had on Franklin Street some very intelligent residents who read very carefully the state regulations and, you know, you know, they, they got into some, we got into some very fine details, right down to individual people's fences and, you know, that, that might have to move, or, you know, things like that, cutting down a shrub or a tree and things like that. But, you know, we explained why none of those things pushes it beyond the type two action.
Yeah. Yes.
I know council isn't here, but there's no legal ramifications or something, like, if we sign this, then there was some lurking something we didn't know about. It's clearly in the regulations, it's type two and but a bang, but a bang, and there was a form.
Yeah, we, we think it's open and shut and, you know, the, I didn't, within the committee report, I cite the specific section and I quote that in the, in the communication. There's repair, rehabilitation, or even a full replacement on the same site is, in this case, type two action.
I do have one question, it's not only for you, but anybody who attended the meeting. What, what was the vibe at the meeting? Was it supportive generally, was it hostile, or was it mixed? Was it, is that pressed and irrelevant because it was technical?
It certainly wasn't hostile.
Okay.
It was more of people wanting a better understanding of what was going on on their street and in their community and in their neighborhood. And the consultants were there, so they did a really nice job of making up the presentation. And also Bartek was there, was, no, no, Bartek wasn't.
Greg, my associate, Greg.
Greg was there.
We'd like to thank, you know, programing publicly for all his work.
Yeah.
You know, the outreach, each time we've had these meetings, of which now there's been four PAC meetings and two public meetings. Greg, you know, has always noticed everyone up and down both sides of the street, you know, to, to make sure that people have the opportunity to participate. And we formed a committee of stakeholders, including representatives from A and the church, from Hodge Center, from Kingston Library. So we've really, you know, we, we understand we're working in what feels like people's front yards. And naturally, they have questions about how much noise, you know, what time will they start working? When does the project begin? How long will it take?
Totally agree.
You know, so.
Very reasonable.
Yeah, if it was my front, I don't live on Franklin Street, but if that was my front yard, I'd have those same kinds of questions.
Yeah.
Hey, that's my only possible concern was if there are a hundred people there and ninety-nine people hated the idea.
No, I think the, the general feeling that I got leaving the, the meeting was that everyone was now on board with this, because they had their, their questions answered and they felt comfortable about what's going to take place now. Whereas before, maybe they didn't. And so, or maybe they just needed to hear it, you know, so.
I would also note that the letters that have been coming in to the common council and contrary to the earlier, you know, stash of letters have been, so that sort of balances the letters. Okay, thank you.
And dissertations.
All right, did we have any other questions for John? No? Okay, so I'm going to read the committee report. It's a resolution pursuant to six N Y R C C part six seventeen. The City of Kingston Common Council hereby determines that the Franklin Street Complete Street project is a type two action pursuant will have no potential significant adverse environmental impacts and hereby renders a negative declaration in connection with this action pursuant to, of, is that of supposed to be here?
And strict, you can strict of.
To six N Y C R R part six seventeen, point five, sub C, sub two. Motion to discuss? All very, he's got two. Any discussion? No, all in favor? Eye, looks like the eyes have it. Thank you, John. Thank you for your work.
Good evening.
All right, and now we're going to move back to that item number three, the city code, amending the city code.
Yes, I have a couple of printouts and I will mail to everyone who is remote. I didn't, you got your computers, I didn't want to waste another.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, sure.
Yeah. We're good.
Okay. I think we left off, I could just read this committee report, since we talked about this already. Yes, okay. So the committee report says amend chapter three thirty, records of the city code as detailed in the attached document. And there is an attachment attached to the committee report that has the strikeouts on what we're changing in the code. And if you all don't have that, Elisa.
Just forwarded.
Okay, Court Counsel just forwarded that to everyone, if they want to take a look at that. Okay, could I have a motion to discuss, please? Just a second. Any discussion on this item?
I just looked through real quickly, just everything that's crossed out is the change and then the underline those changes, though.
See the under. I'm pretty copy for myself, the underline, I believe substitutes, correct? I didn't.
Underline is to correct, yeah, and whatever's taken out. It's crossed.
Now, is this going to stay like in this form like this, with the crossouts and the underline, or are we going to?
No, the, the cross, the parts that are going to be shut, shut from the.
So this will be a whole new document?
Correct, but that's just in a manner so that we didn't have to write out a committee. But that's just in a manner so that we didn't have to write out a committee report each, you know.
Right.
Yeah, because it's easy to.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, all in favor? I'm sorry, I don't think that'd be the vote. All in favor? Eye? No one is opposing? All right, the eyes have it. Thank you very much.
And. This is duplicated back?
This is duplicated, yes. So I'm going to send it around. All right, and I think that concludes everything that we're supposed to talk about tonight. And can I get, anybody have anything to say before we? Motion to dismiss? Happy St. Patrick's Day. Motion to dismiss? I didn't see any, oh, you guys want to say? Okay. Okay, you got it. Motion to adjourn. Thank you very much, guys.
Thank you.
All in favor?